...of the roll call.
Councilmember Dan Gill.
Here.
Councilmember Hedges.
Here.
Councilmember Phillips.
Here.
Councilmember Teelander.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
I'm here.
Board member Pat Walter.
Here.
Board member Sal Smedel.
Here.
Board member Schravin.
Here.
And Chair Beecham.
Here.
Mr. Chair, I'd move that we make a small adjustment in the agenda, that we create an item seven, return to open meeting, make item eight adjournment. Next motion.
So, for second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
opposed? Okay. Move on now to citizen count. No public comment?
Hold on two, discussion regarding the Lowell Energy AD Lead Bio Digestor odor issue.
I guess I'll start this on, to kind of reiterate, since the last, of the last meeting, obviously, the last city council meeting, the city council directed the city manager, myself, and the city attorney to, to take action to cease operation of the bio digester until they correct the issues, subject to the 122nd agreement. We began that process to do that, and we never actually had to issue a formal notice. They were actually in the process of issuing that norm, that notice to us, that they were going to take those actions. And obviously, there was Thanksgiving holidays, so at that time, and there were, City Hall was closed, there was no, there was no business being conducted. They were in that process. On Sunday, I received a report that there was, there was, actually, I received notification on Saturday that was issued with a ballot at the bio digester, but at the time, it was on Saturday morning, there was no order being emanated from the site. Later that afternoon, I was received notification from Chief Ukel that there was order at the site on Saturday afternoon, and the police department was cited, citedly for the infraction. Sunday afternoon, I was notified that there was, there was a liquid substance released from the bio digester, and there was a strong order. I came out that afternoon, and met, met in touch with a couple of the residents. Councilman Phillips was not seen, and so was Councilman Mayor DeBoer, and we met with the residents, and we, and we, we looked at the matter, and we addressed, police department issued a citation for that infraction. Since then, we were notified by lead that there was what they call a foaming of the, of the bio digester that caused the issue and odor. They are in the process of helping out the material from the bio digester, and they're beginning their process to cease operations. That's just, that's the, that's the, that's the reader's digest version, I guess, for now. They have submitted a letter, they are not in attendance here this evening. They have submitted a letter to, to Dick Lent. I'm gonna read the letter, and I believe it's all in front of all of you, from, from J. Rod Lonner, their attorney. Dear Mr. Lent, on behalf of my client Lowell Energy AD LLC Lead, this letter is intended to outline the steps that Lead has taken and will take to shut down the bio digester located in 615 Chad Street in Lowell, Michigan. At the Lowell City Council meeting on November 21st, the Lowell City Council directed you and the city manager to take action to require Lead to shut down the bio digester and wastewater pretreatment facility in accordance with odor mitigation plan dated October 6, 2016. The following action was taken by Lead and will continue to be taken by Lead to complete the shutdown. One, Lead has halted receiving feedstock of any kind prior to the November 21st, 2016, and will not receive feedstock until such time as Lead is in full compliance with the odor mitigation plan. Two, on November 23rd, 2016, Lead sent notification to Lighthouse Incorporated that effective November 24, 2016, Lead could no longer receive waste streams from Lighthouse. Three, Lead began removing sludge from the anaerobic digester on Saturday, November 26, and has continued to remove sludge since that time. Four, Lead will continue to remove the sludge from the anaerobic digester until all sludge has been removed. When these actions are complete, the operations of the wastewater pretreatment facility and the bio digester will be halted as required by the odor mitigation plan. As you are aware, the bio digester experienced a problem beginning sometime on Friday, November 25, which resulted in sludge spilling from the anaerobic digester, and tears in the top membrane and the inner membrane of the anaerobic digester. These tears have allowed odor to escape through the top of the, of the digester. The only method to eliminate the odors from, from the tears in the membrane is to remove all of the sludge from the anaerobic digester. I cannot provide a definitive date when all of the sludge will be removed from the anaerobic digester, however, Lead is continuously pumping the sludge out of the digester as fast as possible, and hopes to have all of the sludge out of it on Friday, December 2nd, 2016. Once all of the sludge has been pumped out of the anaerobic digester, Lead will have the anaerobic digester interliner power washed. At this point in time, in order to comply with the odor mitigation plan, and to eliminate the odor caused by the tears to the membranes, Lead is halting all operations of the bio digester and the wastewater treatment facility indefinitely. Lead will be using this time during which operations are halted to review all components of the bio digester and the wastewater pretreatment facility, investigate the cause of the problems which led to the tears in the membranes, and review the feasibility of its operations. The timing of the event which led to the tears in the membranes in the bio digester could not have been worse, as Lead's contractor had completed covering the clarifiers to capture all of the potential odors that could have been dispersing beyond the property boundaries. The odor control system is complete and operating as it is intended to operate. Correction, let me go back in line. The events of the past weekend are completely unrelated to the odor control system. The odor control system is complete and operating as it is intended to operate. Although the bio digester will require further recollect tears, the wastewater pretreatment facility could function properly in an odor-free manner regardless of the status of the bio digester. That being said, Lead is committed to taking the time necessary to review all of its systems to ensure that if Lead begins operations at some point in the future, that it can operate in a manner that does not emit detectable odor beyond its property line while producing the benefits to the city of Lowell that were intended at the beginning of this project. I'm happy to review the actions discussed in this letter or any questions you might have. Please contact me with any questions. Yours truly, Dean Rumpel. In addition to that, there was also, there was a letter that was issued to the, to the surrounding, the resident surrounding bio digester today, that's in front of you. I'm not gonna read that. It's not much different than what was, what was said. But I'll be happy to send my, uh...
Wanna go first?
Boy, I, I'm, I go around and make like a lot of you guys, it's a tremendous amount of us now. I, I don't wanna rehash everything we've done the last three or four months with this and that. I mean, I think after tonight, in a full session, I think we'll come to some resolution one way or the other, that's why I'm here tonight, see what, see what we can move forward with this.
I'm, I'm shocked, and I'm floored, and I'm just, we let you down.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did.
And I apologize. So, you know what, my vote's gonna be in front of you and in behind closed doors.
Well, that's starting.
That's it.
There you go. Thank you.
I wanna hear from the legal counsel to see how we proceed forward.
I guess I just wanna mention that all along, I've been a huge supporter of the bio digester. I think it's a great idea. And even despite all this, I still believe in the concept of bio digester. I just don't really have the confidence in Lead to, to do it. I mean, I've, before this even happened, I mean, I can tell you that over the weekend, I kind of ranted a bit about just some of the silly things that I continue to see. Try to keep that in private, you know, but I've, I've been frustrated, because I've been involved, and I'm not one of the people that went to Germany. I work in engineering, not in the same field, but enough to know that I shouldn't be able to help them, and I feel like I can, and that's not, I don't know, I'm just frustrated. So, hopefully, we can figure something out with all of this. I mean, I, I guess that I've kind of lost a lot of confidence then, when this thing sort of happened. That was kind of like placing on the cake, and, I don't know, it's just no fun. So, I appreciate the community's patience and all this, and hopefully, we can solve this like we solve any other problem. I mean, that's how communities move ahead.
So, did light power, did you guys get the letter from Lighthouse?
From Lighthouse?
Did you guys see a letter from Lighthouse? Did they, were they not included in here?
That, that letter was directed to the city, to the city council, to the city ma, the mayor, and so I distributed it to.
Council?
I distributed it to the council.
Okay.
And I, I believe I did for these documents, but I haven't recorded.
We have wonderful companies here, and Lighthouse has a big concern, and I wanted to make sure that they're part of the discussion.
Well, I'm, I'm very concerned with this weekend, with it affecting our children, you know, getting into that school, and we need to take care of those kids, that's what we're here for. They're our future, and we need to really think about that.
I'd echo what Mr. Schravin said, that I did not go to Germany, but I knew all six people that did, and knew them quite well, and I know that, that they, in their best judgment, were quite excited about the possibility of generating electricity in this manner, and looking forward that it would be a, a very good thing for our community, and groundbreaking on the part of our community, something quite daring, too daring perhaps. And I too have lost faith in what sparked, as it began, Spark, S.P.A.R.T., and now LEAD, Lead, in operating this facility. It's not the way it was presented to us, it's a, a huge disappointment. And similarly, I apologize. My signature was on those papers that brought that thing here, and I deeply apologize. This is not the way it was supposed to be.
I am really disappointed that Lead is not here tonight. I can't imagine how they could not be here tonight, but this is very serious stuff. They had shared with us that there were lawsuits pending over design problems. I think there were construction problems, the plans changed, I'm not sure how those were approved. There were operational problems. This thing looked great on paper. The, both boards, the council, looked at this and felt that it was cutting-edge technology that was gonna enhance Lowell, possibly bring other development here. It has done nothing but give Lowell a black eye. I'm, I'm disappointed that we, I understand this, this looked great on paper, and we had contracts written, and at that point, nobody envisioned this thing going south on us. But in our special meeting that we had, the joint meeting a month ago, I thought we had an agreement that would force them in seven days to shut things down. And to find out that, A, they didn't honor that agreement, they pushed past that seven days until the city council put their foot down, they just continued to operate it in violation of that agreement. And I'm also disappointed that we didn't have more teeth in our agreement. It really wasn't an enforceable thing that we had, and I think that, that's a huge problem. As we talked about, I, this thing, I don't think it's gonna end well. And the path that we're headed down, I think we just need to get started down that path. I would like to get a second legal opinion from another firm on the contracts that we have, and what we can do to enforce them. I understand there's gonna be litigation involved, and it's gonna cost us some money, but I think that's something that's gonna happen, and we might as well embark down that path sooner rather than later.
I think, and I said it in August, and September, and October, that we got a sore lemon, a rotten lemon. And it's nothing like the one that the people went to Germany and saw, and it doesn't smell like it either. And I, along with everyone else, have no confidence in anything that Lead says, or does, or any of their actions, and I don't know, I, I think they've had more than enough chances.
Everybody good? You guys good?
Public comment?
Yep.
Public comment?
Yep, anybody wants to?
Ryan Mitchell, Amity Street. First and foremost, in arguing this, that it's not a cop out, with all due respect. I see a lot of knee bouncing, and a lot of squirming. What that tells you, with the legal action, and you believe in it, and sorry, to start, it don't cut it. It's nasty. It's flat-out nasty. Nasty and kids don't go in the same sentence. I don't know about you guys, and I've said it to amongst some of you guys that I've talked to on a, on a personal level, before all the suits, the ties, the briefcases, the agendas, we were all kids. You hear me? We were all kids. We had good time growing up, and they're not. They're coming in from recess smelling nasty. They're canceling the ventilation system because of nasty. And you're saying, we wanna hear more legal counsel, or you're hemming and hawing about it because you believe in it. I believe in it too. There's nothing wrong with forward thinking, and forward progress, and trying to be innovative. Nothing wrong. But don't do it in the backyard with the kids. I've got kids, they're not at that school, I am jaded, it's wrong. So stop squirming and knee bouncing, 'cause you know you're wrong. Everything about that thing is wrong. And anything short of no, do not pass go, do not collect $200, pack your stuff up and go, is selling us as a community short. It's time to stand up and do the right thing, and I think you guys know what it is. Anything short of that is sad, and you need to pack up and go. I'm not wrong here, I moved here, I'm a transplant. This is a damn nice community, guys, you guys got here. This is a nice community here, you should be proud of it. I'm proud of it. And to sit here and hear people hemming and hawing about something that's not right, that doesn't make me believe in it. I'm not scared of the people that are backing this thing. And if you're cowardly, and you're not gonna sit there and stand up and admit that you're behind this, and the private investors, shame on them. What's the worst that's gonna happen? They're gonna push us out, what's the repercussions? They're gonna bully us, but they're doing a fine job already, 'cause some of us already got one foot out of town already, and that shouldn't be happening.
Well, I'd agree with him, I think that, you know, we got, our hearts were all in the right place. I think Greg North really wanted this thing to work, you know, I felt his passion, you know, I want this to work, he's given us this work.
I'm sorry, can you introduce yourself?
I beg your pardon, my name is Annette Rissimo. And, and our hearts were in the right place, and I agree with you, I want this to work. I think biomass, it's the way of the future, we all had our hearts in the right place. But the thing is, we've been lied to for so long, we've all lost confidence. And the arrogant disregard for the health of the community and the children is stunning. If you think about phase changes, as things go from gases to liquids to solids at different temperatures, what are those gases collecting in our lungs? Think of the first responders in New York City, those people didn't think to wear a mask. In fact, I brought one, I was gonna make a visual impact, but the point is, what we're collecting, that gas is collecting in our, it'll be a lie, in our lungs, that's a word, that, the gas is us. We are the ingestors, we're ingesting that gas. I, who knows the long-term effect of that? Now, it's noxious, yeah, that's unpleasant, who likes the smell stink? But what about the undetectable gases? What about the things that are below the perception level? What about the things that we don't know about? We don't have any definitive answer on that. What's the long-term effect of that? And the children deny fresh air, is that not a basic right? Are you kidding me? You're closing children in the area. Now, I'd like to think that this thing, we're just, it blew the other day, and these children, the air thing was just that other day, but I'm here to tell you it's not. 'Cause I talk, I walk in the area, I'm in the neighborhood, and the teacher told me, she has little teeny children, and she said, "Teacher, the children are not flushing the toilet, there's manure, there's poop smell in the classroom." This is going on all fall, this is nothing recent. Maybe it's just rising to the level of consciousness that has been reported, that you observed it, so now it's become real in your world. It's not real in the world of those classroom teachers, that when all fall with the windows closed, they had children complaining. This is a huge problem that's going on, we've been lied to, we've been delayed, and I'm wondering if this is their strategy, is atrophying. We're gonna die out, our caring, we're gonna give up, we say, hey, it's Thursday night, I've worked all day, I'm tired, I'm not going to that meeting. Are we all gonna just have attrition? We're just gonna fall away and give in to them? Because they have that same repetition, false response, that we're, yeah, we're gonna do it, our hearts in the right place, we're gonna give up. Are we gonna give up on our children? Are we gonna give up on our property, our homes, our well-being? I went out the other morning, Monday morning, walking at 5:15, I was shut up. I called the police, they came right by, we smelled it, it was horrible on Riverside Drive. Ironically, I went out walking at 5:15, 12 hours later, same thing! I've been over to St. John's all day, God bless you people that are stuck here all day. I drive two hours, an hour down the road, I'm away from it. 12 hours later, it was the same thing, nothing changed. So the thing is, until you demand the immediate removal of that facility, 'cause I can't imagine what this thing would be like when the volume of the processing increases. They can't control the variables they have, they wanna fix it. Are you kidding me? How many times has gone on for years in your people's backyard? I've been gone all summer. The point is, this is a problem, it needs to be dismantled, or those schools need to be shut down. And I think it needs to be now, and I think people need to stand up, because until we become outraged, and until we go to the streets and stand in front of those access driveways and allow things not to happen, I think we're gonna have to get a little rammed up here, folks, because they're lying to us, and they think we're just gonna wanna, wanna, wanna lay down and drop out, and I don't know if anybody here is willing to drop out and give up your livelihood.
And your health?
I think both the council and the board are very much aware of the seriousness of this, and this was something that could have been handled in our regular meeting, which is only two business days away, but we called a special meeting. We are doing everything we can. Unfortunately, we can't break the law to shut this thing down, we have to use legal methods to do it, and I, I think we will, I will do everything I can to. They've had a lot of chances, the fact that they're not here, we need to move forward.
This is the second meeting that they haven't been here, when they've been an agenda item. Right now, they're the only agenda item, and they weren't in Ryan's front yard on Sunday either, like they should have been. I was, Jeff was, Mike was, Steve was, but no Lead.
Hi, I'm Candace Fleszzer. I live in the neighborhood, I spent the entire summer with my windows closed, which I did not like, because I love summer, and I love the breeze going through my house. Obviously, it's a problem, it needs to be taken care of. I'm not hearing a lot of discussion on what's next. You know, a lot of people are talking about shut it down, dismantle it. We don't even know if dismantling it is an option, or if that's something that they'll do. I think that before a decision is made, we need to know what we're gonna be left with. This is my neighborhood, this thing is two blocks from me, and I don't want some rotting facility two blocks from me for decades, you know, to take care of. So, what will happen? You know, what is our best option? We can't change what's happened in the past, you know, so let's look at what the best way to go forward is, because, you know, we could, we could be jumping out of the frying pan into the fire, and maybe not, but I, it doesn't seem like we have the information to decide that. So I think we really need to know what happens next based on the decisions that might be made.
I am Denny Smith, and I live on Lafayette. And I guess my question is, we keep talking about legal, legal. I would like to understand in clear terms, without all the jargon, what that means. Legal, legally, why can't we not get rid of it? I just don't understand that.
Dick, would you like to answer that?
Or try to answer it?
The bio digester operation is a private company. It's not owned or operated by the city, or can the city control the ownership or operation of that. So it has no authority to go in and tear it down, or to remove it. To do that would be trespass, and that would be illegal. And so if the city were determined to terminate the use of that, it would have to follow appropriate legal procedures to do that. In the end, it would likely have to get a court order to approve the closing down permanently, or the dismantling of that. Does it help?
You haven't had time to do that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've heard that before.
So how far along is that court order? It's moving along, right?
Why, why isn't it being done?
And how much city money do you spend on something while you're trying to resolve an issue? I mean, we don't have unlimited funds here, so, you know, you gotta try to solve the issue before you start throwing things.
There was just a thing on the news tonight, that for $3.5 million, we can buy that stinking bio digester out of taxpayer money. Why would the taxpayers pay for something that's a detriment to the soc, uh, area?
Right, so the suggestion here was, why haven't we been doing legal stuff and spending more money when we don't know who needs to spend it yet? I understand, it's an emotional issue, I live right, I live in the middle of it. My kids play at Bushnell all the time, every day, I get it. But I'm, just because I feel emotional about it, I'm not ready to start, like, throwing money left and right, I want the issue solved, and maybe getting a different person to come in and deal with it, and run the place, who knows what they're doing. Okay, so what's the other option? The other option is that we have a rotting facility for decades to come, which brings down our home values, which may stink anyway. We don't even know what they're obligated to do. So you, you have all the answers, 'cause I don't.
Word is Lowell Light.
I don't have the answers.
If we wanna talk to each other, we'll get one person.
I wanna talk to experts, not standard.
Right, but I'm saying, everybody's, everybody's making assumptions if they know what's going on. And they don't, I don't.
So when do we get that information?
Right, so let's get it, but stop, you know, we need to stop doing the emotional stuff.
We need one person to speak to.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
My name is Mike Kreister, and I live at 1820 Sibley. Watching the news last night, this goes back to the odor and stuff that they wanted the open house, from the forms they got. So, to me, I wanna know why this has been going on for several years, and Lowell Light and Power has not said anything to the public about it. To me, this sounds like a big cover-up. This all comes out on the news without us knowing it. I have no faith in Lowell Light and Power, I have no faith in our city council. We hear a lot of talk, we see no action.
Pamela Crizik, on Howard Street. I would just like to know, out of all the finds and clues...
I would just like to know, out of all the finds including, I believe, from the DEQ, and all the finds that they've received that we've heard about the last couple days, how many of you knew about that?
Well, you're talking about the police citation?
I'm talking, we saw something on the news, that there was 140 citations for, I believe it was the wastewater. I'm not exactly positive, but I know there's been, not just from the city, but other agencies that have fined them, and did you know about that?
We all get monthly reports from Chief Duke about the citation, from Mr. Mutt every month, about all the citation. And I believe the wastewater ones, they have to be published, a notice in the ledger.
My name is Steve Browning. I live very close to that thing. I wanna make a comment, and then I wanna ask a question. The comment is that clearly, the company responsible for this thing is failing terrible. I can understand why you guys are trying to shine such a big light on that, okay? Because they are failing terrible. But there was decisions made, that I believe there was input from people in this room, as to where that was gonna be located. There's where the responsibility lies, right here. So my question becomes, is everybody committed to doing everything they have to do to make sure that thing's not fired back up? That's what we all wanna know, and that's why we all just reacted to the one person in the room, who for some reason, doesn't share that end goal as a huge desire in their life. That's my question. I would like to hear your feelings on that, because that's what we all wanna see. No more talk about working it out, because that's stupid. This whole idea was stupid, putting words at, and we're kind of done listening to that kind of common sense that's not common sense. That's my question.
I'll answer them first. I was not on the council or the Light Power Board when this whole plan came into effect, but I was extremely suspect of the location, of it being in a neighborhood. When we had our conference call with their odor expert, he said, "I would have never put it there." I am not committed to giving them any more chances. They've proved they do not know how to run that project, I think, more than one time, more than 10 times. I am personally very passionate about it being shut down permanently and trumped out of town.
I was on the low light and power board. I was not one of the people that went to Germany. My nose doesn't work at all. No point in me going over there, because we were going there to determine if it did smell. And the stuff there, what we got here is totally different than what they saw there. The feedstock is different, the process is different. The reason, the logic in placing it there, we looked at a couple of sites. We needed to have access to city sewer and city water, and there was going to be a pipeline built to wherever the biodigester was located from Lighthouse. So the closer it is to Lighthouse, the better. The other site that was considered was down by the fairgrounds near the wastewater treatment plant. Because the fairgrounds are probably, or the fair is gonna be leaving Lowell, it looks like, at some point in the next five to 10 years, the board, and I think the council, looked at that as future recreational area down there for development, rather than adding to more industrial stuff in a beautiful riverfront area. So the thing was not supposed to smell. Low light and power had a lot of vacant space in that building. If it is converted to rental space, such as the biodigester, it gets back on the tax rolls as tax revenue to the city. It was a benefit to Lighthouse. They do have a contingency plan if this thing goes out. I talked to them two months ago about this, when it first started blowing up. And they have a contingency plan. It is helpful for them. Our thought was that there might be other food processors that would wanna locate Lowell, provide additional jobs, tax revenue. On paper, the thing looked good. In reality, it turned out to stink, and it's failed at every step of the process. I said earlier, I see this not ending well, and we might as well start down that path now. So there's my point of view.
I would echo and support. Greg was chairperson of Light and Power at the time. I was mayor at the time, and I'll take responsibility for that. The six people that went to Germany looked at this kind of system and came back, reported that it worked very well. All of the science was there indicating that it would work well. And that's what we were sold. That's what we believed. The facts backed that up at that time. What we have now is not what we signed on for. And that's where the legal stuff comes in. That's not what is happening. And that is where, again, I would say, no, it's gotta go. I have no faith in it as it exists right now. It has to go. It's not what we signed on for.
I wasn't part of that. Came on last year. I wanted it to work too, but like the gentleman stated, I found out things on the news the other night I never knew either. You know, that's news to me. I didn't know any of that, and stunk since day one. They've had more than enough time to resolve the matter. They should have came in with all this in the beginning, which they didn't, and they just keep adding, and keep adding, and keep adding. I'm done. I wanna see it go as well.
I think you all know my position. I have been in trouble since 2013, when I started the website, lolcityhall.com, and I wrote against it. I wrote against the logic of putting it into the city. I'm totally ticked off about the whole scenario, everything that went on. I'm here on the city council because I wrote about it. Go to that site, look at the old articles. They're back up. I'm so angry, I put them back up. Read them. You'll see where I've been. There's a person that's not here tonight named Greg Pierce. I wanna know where he is. Why isn't he, he brought it here. I wanna know why he's not here.
I mean, as the new chair member, he's retired.
You pay $150 an hour to come in.
If I'd known that we needed him here, I guess I could have made a call. I don't know if he's out in Colorado, where he has property or not. I don't know that. It started with him.
I think it's a matter of respect, really.
Here's what my disappointment is, is I got on the Low Light Power Board, maybe sometime in September for the first time, and it's a great thing. Where I'm disappointed is that most of you guys on the city council have been on for over a year, and we didn't really hear any complaints from anybody to the council until August. So I'm really disappointed that you guys, when you guys first got elected in November of 2015, took eight or nine months to even think about it. So these people all summer long smelled it. No, nobody said anything. I came to every meeting during the summer. There was nothing. So...
Do you wanna know why?
We'll go in closed session. We'll have that discussion. I'm just letting you know, nobody called the Department of Health and County. Nobody called the DEQ. It sat for all summer. I was the first one to call, that made any comments. And they said, we have no comments from anybody in the city management, anybody who was concerned about the citizens' look. So not until August, or whenever we had our first meeting, did really we get involved with it. So that's where I'm disappointed from sitting here, from the standpoint.
We called.
Listen to them.
I'm saying, the county's told me they had, as of August 18th, they had not received one call.
That's why I want Greg Pierce here.
Yep, from the city.
He feels that a lot of it's called. And he wasn't documenting it.
Well, that's calling Greg Pierce. That's not calling county.
I'll call out Greg Pierce.
You know, to make those plans, to get some action.
I was, I'm still on the board. When this surfaced, my background is, I was with Lowell Civil Women's Garden of, and what have you. When this surfaced, I have to tell you guys, I was first raised my hand, said, oh my gosh, this is cool. This is unique. This will really bring a lot of, I don't know, put this on the map. Wow. When they went to Europe, I couldn't go. When they went to Europe, I pulled some numbers here, and I says, well, you know, exactly what is that? Well, I'm looking at, they went to Germany, and as of today, for a city-owned, what we have going here, that they have in Germany, there's like 6,800 of them, all over Germany, working well. And they came back, because I told them, get out of your car, walk around. And they all came back. I said, cool. When they all came back, they said, Tina, it's amazing. And I was just emphatic. I told them, and sorry, Diane, but I raised my hand, said, why is it over there? I wanna have my side of the river. I wanna have my neighborhood. Because I want, whenever I do a project, I own it. That's how I want it. And I wanted it where I could see it, you know? Again, I apologize. I thought things were running smoothly. I did. Not this past summer, but prior to it got really bad and the fog came in, I couldn't believe it. Lead, Miss Lettus. They did. They did. They misled us. They showed them a plant, and I kept on saying to them, I know, I'm not a scientist, and I'm not an engineer, but what did they feed to theirs in Germany that were feeding here, and what's the problem? They would not answer my questions. They, you know, finally found out that it was, because Germany does a lot of beets, beets went in there. That was, you know, well, Lighthouse is the same thing. Well, it's not. I'm just shocked, because Lead let us astray. Lead, you know, to be honest with you guys, I think they built us a cheaper rendition of what you guys saw in Germany. I think, you know, it's pretty evident, because it's supposed to work on paper. I've got paperwork here to show that, but gosh darn it, all these farmers love it. But I think that's what's happened. I think that's the reason why they won't answer my questions, is I think engineering situation, that they, you know, didn't use stainless steel. They used the cheapest product that they didn't get their hands on. And I'm upset too. My goal is, I want it to be bulldozed and hauled out of here. Just this.
Can we, okay, let's, can we go through?
I will, I was, I apologize. What I apologize for is that we didn't take legal action sooner. If, and I know Mike, if people would go back, and I, even attest, I had said in meetings, previous meetings, that think back a year or so about, in our meetings, about the smell and how that they needed to get it taken care of, and different issues. My apology is that we didn't take legal action to do, to get it resolved, because once, I mean, in the scheme of things, once legal action was taken, it's been three months, 90 days, that they are pumping everything out. And again, if we would have taken legal action sooner, discussed it then, you know, maybe we wouldn't have had to live through what everybody lived through. But it was discussed. It was brought to their attention. And again, naive, thinking that, okay, they're gonna take care of it or whatever, and obviously they haven't, and it's been a failure.
And it sounds like we're all kind of pulling the same thing. I mean, you know, varying degrees. I mean, I mentioned earlier that I still believe in biodigesters as a concept and truth, whether we keep this one or tear it down or build another one. I don't know. I'm not really at that point, or trying to solve this problem. And, you know, confidence is a huge part of it, and I think, right now, this community doesn't still have the confidence to put that thing where it is. You know, it's, in theory, maybe it could go there. I don't think anyone wants to test that theory anymore. You know, I was on the Germany trip, and I remember there was one site we visited with a reflow tank. It actually had like a kind of a catwalk or something, where you could actually go, and I was probably like three feet below the two valves of the reflow tank. Their flatman was nonstop letting gas out, I was standing right there. I think I have a video of it somewhere at home, couldn't smell anything. And that's what they were all like. I mean, they were one, well, as Tina mentioned, there's thousands of them in Germany. When we were there, one of the things I asked was, saying, well, what's the worst that could happen? Could the reflow tank fail somehow, and all the sludge fall out? And like, well, that can't happen. Their concrete, the membrane, and that goes, like, that's super tough. It's the same thing over the Superdome and all the other type of facilities, and they just don't have these kind of problems there with them. And that's where I'm saying that the biodigesters, they're real, it's a legit thing. It's growing in the world, in the country. They're gonna happen somewhere. What I think I've come to conclude is that Lead just didn't know how to do it. And I kind of feel bad being, you know, the engineer among the boards here, that I kind of feel like maybe I could have noticed somewhere, or kind of figured it out sooner. I mean, I've been harping on Lead for about a year now, about where's your operational plan? Why don't you have like a poultry analysis, an engineering analysis? And when I mentioned the rant that I had with my wife, you know, the weekend, that the part that got me going about that was when they, I've been telling them, they identified a root potential source of odor. You know, we've gone through every little component of the system where things can come out. They said they were finally gonna do that, capture all the odor, and then I found out after the November 1st deadline, they decided, we better go ducking those two valves. I was like, you mean the two valves that had a major odor release over the summer? Those weren't identified as a source of odor. It's like, come on, guys, you know? And that's what gets me, is the process they're following. It's not the most complicated technology. The biology is different than what we saw in Germany, and that's one thing I had talked about folks in Germany about, was, we're gonna use something different. At the time, we didn't know exactly what it was gonna be, and is it tolerable? They're like, oh yeah, it takes a while to dial in the bacteria. You try this, you try that, and, you know, but the point was, is that Lead didn't, in hindsight, Lead didn't have a process in place to control what they were trying. And that's what's really frustrating, is any engineering process, we're dealing with something potentially hazardous. You put the controls around it first, then you start messing with it, and you mess with it in a way that it doesn't, you know, fail like the way it does. And they have so many single-point failures, it was frustrating to see that as an engineer. I mean, it's not the kind of workout I would be proud of, and now they kept it up. So, I mean, I think as a community, it sounds like we all know where we're going with this. And I think that's pretty much the only person actually left. I know at one of the meetings, meetings we had before, when we were talking about the November 1st deadline, somebody was asking, like, how many chances does it get? And I think my response was, I think everyone understands this is their last chance, that being November 1st. You know, they, they're, they might not have chances. So the other thing I wanted to comment on, I know you had, I like your comments, you're very passionate. I assumed you were referring to me about the knee bouncing. Sorry about that. I do it at my desk all day long. I do it everywhere. I'm a naturally direct person. It gets worse in front of crowds. I try to stop, and I keep noticing my knees bouncing again. So that's just who I am. College, if that's not what you'd like to see in a board member, but that's me, so. But the other thing is, you mentioned about the kids. Well, I've got two kids that attend Bushnell. And, yeah, I definitely think about it. You know, I'm concerned about it. You know, I know that it's a concern, really, of anywhere, you cut a school, any kind of business theater. I mean, Lighthouse is next to Bushnell, so is that a concern? I mean, metric manufacturing, there's Lowell, there's lots of industrial facilities right next to all these schools. next to all these schools.
All with the track record of being able to produce what they produce efficiently next to a school.
Exactly. And you'd expect any business that's, you know, can handle what it's doing. You know, I mean, our wastewater plant, you know, is near some residences, you know, not super close, but there's various things there, there's a park right next to it, and we don't get complaints because you're taking good care of it. You know, it's just, you expect professionals to run something professionally, and, and we've lost that. And I guess one on the list that hadn't, ended up maybe kind of a happy sad note, so to speak, is, um, is one of those things that my kids, we were driving the other day, and going past the wastewater treatment plant, and they said, "Oh, look, there's an even bigger stinky place." I said, "What are you talking about?" "Well, right there, that's a stinky place." It's like, "No, that one's not a stinky place, you're thinking about the other one." We're like, "Yeah, the one by school has a stinky place." I never told them that, no, I've known that, no, told them that, they concluded it for themselves. And now they recognize any of those pennies of being stinky places, and that just, it's kind of sad that that's the icon that they've got next to their school is the stinky place. You know, kids are always very observant in that regard, and so, so Mark, I did clarify to them that, "No, your place is not the stinky place." And I've been there before, you've taken me on a tour, and it doesn't smell, you know, there's one little area, and it's, and nothing hit, and there's no concern about things coming out. And I think the other part of the professionalism, one thing I know when I had, that reminded me of a tour I had of the water plant, I'm just coming to review on the charts there, he made a comment one time, when he said, "You know, it's just a water plant," he said, "But I'm astuteous of keeping us spotless." And, and someone was kind of saying, "Well, really, why? I mean, it's kind of a big factory thing you got here." He's like, "Well, no, I, I feel like this is drinking water." He said, "I want people, when they walk in here, to think that their water's as clean as everything else in here." And it's true, that's kind of like, it's a good summary of professionalism. And if you walk inside the facility, at the facility, it's just, it's not professional. And I guess that's, sorry to kind of ramble on, but that's kind of, you know, how I see things, it's just, it's unfortunate, sad, and, and it's been kind of a rough year for the city, and it's just, hasn't been very fun, but I think it's, I am proud of the fact that as we, you know, we decided to take the risk of the bi digester, it wasn't really that big of a risk, we thought, but to be on the forefront of something, and that's, sometimes you get burned when you do that, when you're a pioneer, sometimes you get burned. We'll learn from it, we'll move on, we'll find other things to pioneer. And I think the room, something's out.
My name is Arnie Kimball, I live at 202 North Hudson, which is two blocks away, and so we know what we're talking about, a couple of things. If we don't do something about it now, even though that costs money, it's gonna cost us more. The longer it goes, the more the money's gonna pile up. You know that, I know that. Second thing, I want to thank you people for being honest. Sometimes you were speaking on the facts you had. I wasn't quite an idiot, I knew that your facts weren't right, because I lived in that area, and I knew what was going on. So I want to thank you for admitting it. I want Lead with you to do something about it now. Go after it, get it done, whatever money it takes, it's gonna save money in the long run. Appreciate your honesty in facing up to that. The only thing worse than making a mistake is not correcting it.
Listen, guys, and I want it on record, as far as phone calls being placed to all the different agencies, I know that they've been being placed. And I confess, there's people in here that second it. So my first note is, the lack of consistency and protocol in taking those phone calls. That stinks currently, right now, right now. And I called on my way in, when I got home from work. The woman that answered, I think it might've been Pet County that takes the call, correct me if I'm wrong, answered the phone, don't know who she was, very unprofessionally laughing as she's answering the phone, whatever, it is what it is, had no idea about the bi digester. She was like, "Well, do they normally ask me what she should do, what the SOP is?" So, I just want that on record. Second of all, and then conclusion, then ramp up, and I'm speaking on behalf of the community, and I want to give credit where credit's due about the lack of trust. Ladies and gentlemen, if there was ever a time for you guys to gain our trust, the time is now. The time is now. They're calling you out on the street, and I've said it to you guys before, but I mean it from the bottom of my heart, they're calling you out, and the microscope's on you. Now the question is, do the right thing, gain our trust back, because it can be done. Thank you.
Tim Pritzels, 517 Spring Street. My question is for two people, how many hours of PD time you had in this whole thing? Thank you very much.
Could be fighting a different crime.
Giving a conservative estimate, looking at all the complaints that we've taken since July, we did 30 minutes a call, we had 51 citations issued, and that's probably close to 24 hours of, of the time that's been taken.
And about the third.
And about the third, yes.
One thing that was different in the second letter, that Mike didn't read, and a lot of you residents got this, but I see some hope in this, and their closing statement was, from Lead, that "As we consider the future of this project, and with the understanding that the community benefits of a waste and energy system can never be outweighed by inconvenience to our neighbors. If we determine that we cannot reliably run this system without subjecting the neighbors to off-site odors, it simply will not reopen." And for us, there's no legal cost, if they look at this and say, "It hurt itself so bad last week, and they're just gonna pack it up and go away," that's a win for everybody. So, I don't have a lot of faith in what they say, but they have put here in writing that if we can't run this without subjecting the neighbors to off-site odors, it will not reopen. So, that, that was a little cloud there.
I'd say there's, there's still that notion of, you know, if that won't reopen, we still have to figure out what can happen with it. If Mike had reopened, so that's something I think probably discussing the options, or what, you know, I thought there was something in the contract about, under certain circumstances, they might dismantle something, and I can't, you know, I might even be thinking of a different contract, and I don't want to really get into that without having, or somebody kind of advising us on that, but.
I got a quick question. You said they are taking a step out of it, right now.
Yes.
Because I've seen big trucks there, that's what they're doing, that's what I thought the smell was, because they were taking it out, I didn't realize there was another issue. So, if they're doing that, then obviously they must be thinking they're gonna have to shut it down?
No. Well, I think it is, it is shut, I mean, from my understanding, it is shut down. What they are doing is they're currently, that big tank holds 750,000, correct me if I'm wrong, 750,000, and there have been three or four trucks, nonstop, going in. A tanker truck holds 5,000 to 6,000, so it, it can't be done in one day, but they are constantly running, going in, taking that large tank completely out, and filling it, and hauling it away to a disposal site. So they're in the process of, it is shut down, they're in the process of completely removing all materials from that.
So did I hear that by Friday the 2nd, which is tomorrow, correct? That that's supposed to be completely emptied, and then you're going to power wash the inside of that tank, and that's gonna be?
Not we, they.
They. Right.
My understanding is, they, they're hopeful, but again, realize that the amount of, you know, that when they started unloading that, that, you know, we were doing, trying to do the math, that, that, you know, I don't know if they're, they used to haul, Lighthouse used to haul their waste to Muskegon, so I don't know if this waste is going to Muskegon. But again, the fact that a tanker truck, you know, gets there, I don't know if it takes an hour to load it, you know, an hour on the road, then an hour back, and then, you know, that's the feasibility of time. Their hopes are to have it emptied by Friday, but I, I'm not, I wouldn't guarantee.
Well, there were trucks like crazy over there on Sunday and Monday, and I live, I can see that place from where I live. In the last couple days, it's been rather quiet over there, you don't see the tankers lined up like they were on Sunday and Monday, so I don't know what's going on, but the sooner the better.
But they are, my, they are, my understanding, and from the lawyer's letters, they're pumping everything out, and then they were going to power wash it, which I'm assuming then they gotta, you know, if they're power washing it, they gotta pump that out, and so, the, maybe Steve, somebody else can explain better, but, you know, the cover's got a tear in it, so as they're pumping out, yes, we're gonna still continue to get odor, over the next, until that is completely pumped out and washed out, so it's, it's not gonna be a switch that I can flip tonight and have all the smell gone, because that's the process that they're doing.
So what about the kids at the school that have to endure the smell? I mean, there were four kids that got sick this week, when they got to school.
Can you stand up and introduce yourself?
Sure. Lisa Pritzels, Spring Street, over by, around you, basically. So I mean, what are we gonna do? I mean, the fresh air is turned off, so they just smell the crap. So, what's your answer for that?
I don't have an answer, I mean, they're pumping it out as fast as they can. I mean, I'm, I'm not defending them, I'm just telling you what they're doing.
Right.
In order to try to mitigate and get everything resolved as quickly as possible. And I don't, I don't know if I could put a big, a balloon on the whole thing and capture it, but, you know, they're doing, I'm just saying that from the information that I have received, they're pumping it out as fast as they can to eliminate the situation.
You know what, they're really not pumping it out as fast as they can, because they had trucks lined up there on Sunday to get that crap out of there. And in the last couple days, as I drive by there, which I do quite a bit, because it really irritates the crap out of me, there's no trucks there at all, so don't tell me they're pumping it out of there as fast as they can, because they're not.
They have trucks there, all day long. I am right across the street, I'm, I'm, I'm on the corner, I see their building.
On Sunday, they had, they had trucks there cleaning up the spill, so there would've been extra activity on Sunday because of the snow.
They're clearly not.
So, I'm getting, tell me if I'm mistaken, and that risuma from 525 North Hudson, tell me if I'm mistaken, so the school, the, the town then is busing kids in from across the school district to put them, and expose them to this smell. So we're spending money to bring children in, to expose them to an unknown substance? We don't have any information, is that really, that's like having soldiers exposed to radiation tests, just, what, I'm, I'm just stunned that a town would bus in students to expose them to this for long periods of time, when you don't know the outcome. I, I said earlier this year, I think schools should be shut down until the smell's gone, because we don't know, it's a variable, it's an unknown variable, you talk about costs going up, what's gonna be the long-term health cost? We don't know. The first responders didn't think that was gonna hurt New York City either, they got long-term damage in their lungs. This is going into our lungs, it's going into your children's lungs, I'm concerned about the health and welfare. And you know what really makes me sad? That this is undoing the hard work of the, the Chamber of Commerce, the public schools, and everybody that's worked to bring so much honor and pride in this community, and it's just being undone in a flash like this. I would say protect the children.
Terry, I'd like to make a quick comment. I want to clear something up. I've known Greg for a long time, I've known you for a long time. My comment was not against individuals. I think individuals, I only know a few of you, you're good guys. I'm talking about a board, and I'm talking about a city council. The other thing I would like to know, that place in Germany you went to, was that in a residential area by a school?
It was, uh, no, it wasn't, I don't, I couldn't tell you if there was a school right there. We went to five or six of them, and so there were, one was located at a, the first one that we saw, at a landfill, one was on the outskirts of town, on the edge of town.
Couple were at farms, but there was one that was, one that was on the edge of town, it was right at the edge of like a residential, you know, like, or the, like, near their town, town, like it crossed the freeway from their, not the freeway, but like the, Philly Highway or something.
Not in a neighborhood.
The main downtown, so it was like, it was close, not as close as this one is, but like, if you, if you took that bi digester and moved it across Hudson, it'd be that close to where it is now, kind of thing. So it was, it was basically in a town, it was right next to a town. Yeah, and, I mean, we even asked them about it, and they said that town's never had, never complained, they liked it there, and so, and I think, I wonder if the town was lucky to using the excess heat from that bi digester to heat their swimming pool or something like that, so they were, they were loving the benefits that happened.
In your, in your 2011 minutes, it said that the closest one to a village was 300 meters.
Sounds about right, you know, like across Hudson.
To a village, not a town, a little village.
But still, I mean, I had a few, several hundred people there, I mean, it was, it's not, it was close, I mean.
Three football fields.
So, it's. But that's not too far from Smelley.
No, it was not, it was not sugar beet.
Yeah, I said, like I said, it's different than where it is now, but it's, it's not a huge distance apart, it's not really a big concern, I mean.
Hi, I live at 516 Howard, Tracy Croft. My question is, when you went to Germany, we are using over here, it's called the FOG, fats, oils, and greases. And I was told that when you went to Germany, that's not, that's not the components that they were using over there, is that true?
Right, they were using primarily like sugar beets and corn and manure, all of them used manure, and then some combination of beets and corn, primarily because Germany was giving a tax incentive for those crops, kind of like we do around the mall here. And at the time, we didn't know, I don't think we knew what we were gonna put in, I think we were planning to use Lighthouse, whatever they, I'm, I don't know, whatever they call that. I don't know if FOG was part of the plan at the time. You know, I can't remember, we just knew it was gonna be different, but again, when I'd asked the, the people in Germany about that, I said, "We're gonna use something different." They said, "Oh, it'll digest anything, you just have to dial in the bacteria." And so I, I just think it's, it gets back to getting the process, they, they knew it was gonna take them longer to dial it in, so it was a newer mix, but they should've done so in a way that was a little more, you know, safety first, kind of thing, than the way it was operated.
I mean, we can rehash what we saw and everything, we just need to move forward.
Great idea.
A couple more comments I wanted to make, that kind of came up during all the discussion. Someone mentioned the frustration of getting complaints out, or getting them recorded or wherever, and I think that was one of the meetings we had, that was something that I think you and like Burns are working on, or have worked on, because something that we did realize was lacking as part of this, and so that's kind of like a small storyline, I mean, you could say, is, that we recognized that there was a process where people were complaining to, like, power, and it wasn't getting to the police, or vice versa, or, you know, and, and we kind of came to the conclusion that, hopefully you can know who to call, but if you don't, if for some reason you decide to call the section, or the complaint, that hope is that he can help that person get their complaint to the right spot, or whoever you talk to in the city, you know. And so I think that's the goal, is to kind of get a process in place, that if someone tells the complaint, they call the wrong person, we can either tell you who to call, or we can at least forward that complaint to the right spot, so it is handled appropriately, not lost, as apparently happened in the past, and, you know.
Change your mind.
We recognize that, and we want to improve that. Another one I wanted to mention was, talking about restoring the honor and, you know, about Lowell, or what the small town is. Ever since I've been involved, with the like, the city boards and all that, so it's probably been like, hold on, about 70 years or something, I've had a Google News Feed, custom feed for Lowell, Michigan, just to see what's the national media ever find about Lowell, Michigan. And predominantly, it's all about North Country Trail, believe it or not, that's the biggest big mention we get nationwide, is that. And, but yeah, lately, the last six months, all of a sudden, the bi digester, and sticky and smelly, has been one of the more common themes for the city of Lowell, unfortunately.
It's a common theme.
Yeah. And, you know, so that's just, again, that's, this does reflect on who we are, I mean, it's a small thing, but you know, that kind of stuff, lead us last in reputation.
Mark, we talk about calling in and people not knowing, we've called
We talk about calling in and people not knowing. We've called the sheriff department after hours to call in and stuff. They don't seem to know what, you know, what do you do? So, somebody needs to talk to the sheriff, to those dispatchers, to say, this is what's going on, this is what you have to do, instead of blowing us off. I'm a retired Kent County Sheriff, FD. I'm retired from Lowell PD. And communication is important. And it really takes you off when you call in. There's supposedly, there are dispatch system after hours, and they don't seem to know or care.
Yeah. And that was actually good feedback from you guys. I'm assuming that, you know, the chief has taken that, or someone here is kind of taking that input. Hey, go ahead.
Every few months, Sheriff's Department adds people to their dispatch staff. They're growing. The call volume is going up. And every couple of months, they have to go over this with their dispatch supervisors, that if someone calls in the bi digester, they have to let our duty officer know. That is the catalyst that gets everything through. So, I will take care of this event tomorrow. I appreciate it.
And I'll tell you what, you had said earlier that, you know, for a year or whatever it has been, that we've done nothing about it. Even the light power board has done nothing about it. And I'll tell you what, there's two differences in communication and people's ability to get information to him and him. Because we didn't have that a year ago. We had zero communication.
You're right.
And that's why there have been changes.
But as leaders of this community, I still think regardless if you had Mike, you know, Steve at the helm, we still, and I as a resident, I wasn't on any board, but I as a resident had heard complaints. And I feel bad that I personally did not step up, bring it to the attention of the boards. And I think we all find that is our responsibility. We are, if we're on board, or what we are, we are all leaders in this community. And we all lead different ways. And I get emotional about leadership. But I think that's so critical. And I think we all have to do a better as a community to get that across.
Well, I would encourage, I'm going to shortly make a motion, but I would encourage everybody to, I'm going to make the motion go to closed session. No decisions. We have, anytime we make any decisions, that has to be in an opens meeting. So, we will discuss things amongst ourselves, and then we will come back into open session. And I would hope that all of you would still be here to come back into open session to see what resolution or what the council and the board asked. So, with that, I would make a motion go to closed session.
Our support. Any discussions? Do we need a separate motion?
Do I make a motion to go to closed session?
No, so it doesn't work. Any discussion? Roll call, Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Board member Canthalder?
Yes.
Board member Salzweedow?
Yes.
Board member Chravon?
Yes.
And Chair Beecham?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Adelson. You know, thanks for coming out, all of you. And also appreciate all the comments. I mean, this is a very big crowd that was actually very, didn't have anyone like yelling, just insulting or making it personal. Usually when the crowds get big, it's sometimes there's somebody in there that's going to do that. But actually a kind of a nice discussion sort of happened, guys. I appreciate it.
All right. Let's go to a few conclusions.
Thank you, Mayor. First motion I would have to consider is to direct the city manager to direct the wastewater superintendent to revoke the wastewater discharge permit for the...
I'll second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes. And the second motion.
Yes, Mayor. Second motion...
Can you get the microphone, please?
I'm sorry. Second motion, Mayor, is to direct the manager to terminate the wastewater leak if by January 16, 2017, there is not a mutual agreement to dismantle the bi solid facilities.
So, move. In support. And discussion on that one? Sue?
Councilmember Canfield?
Yes.
Councilmember Hedges?
Yes.
Councilmember Phillips?
Yes.
Councilmember Tealander?
Yes.
And Mayor DeBoer?
Yes.
Dick, could you repeat the first motion for the audience that didn't hear that?
Please. Yes. The first motion was to direct the city manager to direct the wastewater superintendent to revoke the wastewater discharge permit for the...
Okay. That pass you down, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Ryan, would you have a motion for the Lowell, yes, Mr. Chair. The motion would be to direct the manager of Light Power to terminate the power purchase agreement for the, if within the next, or if within, by January 16, 2017, there is not a mutual agreement to dismantle the bi digested facilities.
So, move.
Second, please.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Board member Canthalder?
Yes.
Board member Salzweedow?
Yes.
Board member Chravon?
Yes.
And Chair Beecham?
Yes.
And with that?
That we adjourn.
I'll second. All in favor?
Yes.
I would entertain a motion from the Light Power Board to adjourn.
I'll second.
Well, somebody's got to make the motion.
I'll motion to adjourn.
Okay. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.